Welcome to this October 28th Planning Commission meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes. We just have the minutes of the open meeting here. The minutes for the closed meeting will come in November. Are there any additions or corrections?
I thought he captured the essence of what transpired, so I'll go ahead to move acceptance of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we approve the minutes of the commission for the September 30th, 2019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And one abstention. Motion carries. Next, we have citizens' comments. This is a time for citizens to come forward to make comments on anything that is not on the agenda. Are there any citizens out there that would like to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have the planners. We have first the Carroll County Planner, Mary.
I have nothing to add since last month.
Okay.
So were there any meetings or reviews of the county planning as to where it stands and what's been proposed?
Do you mean the rezoning?
Yeah.
We held our public hearing on October 3rd, and we are going back to the commissioners on Thursday, Halloween, to review all the comments. And they are, the record was held open for 10 days, so they could act on it at any time after.
Okay, so are you at liberty to share with us some kind of summary of what those comments included or concerned?
We actually got very few comments at the public hearing. We only had about 10 people show up to both public hearings. We got very few, the few that we got, we had, the Freedom Area Citizens Association had very lengthy comments. So it looks like we have a lot of comments when we summarize them, but they're from only a very few amount of people.
Do you typically get others by email or voicemail?
We did get some. In the 10 days that the record was open, we did get some by email. And with the exception, we probably got five or six regarding the map, and the rest were regarding the text. And the ones regarding the text changes were all ones that we had seen before and that the commissioners had already looked at. They were pretty much reiterating what they had said earlier, but the commissioners are going to take those up again.
Okay, okay.
So we have a two-hour work session scheduled for Thursday afternoon, and if we need another work session, we'll have another one.
Okay, so what's the timetable going forward? What does that look like?
If they get through all the comments on Thursday, they could act at their next regularly scheduled meeting, but I don't want to predict that they would do that.
You'll have an update by our next meeting.
Yes, by the next meeting, I should know a lot more.
That's surprising, that means over.
It's 1:00, and I believe it's scheduled till 3:00.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out, appreciate it. Next is our Frederick County Planner. We did not hear from. Okay.
Well, he gave us quite a bit less.
The next is the introduction and discussion for, the first thing we will discuss is the rules and procedure. We have the draft review as of today. I'm not going to go through each page. Does anyone have any, if you have questions or concerns, please state the page and the number so we can go over it. The only thing that I saw was when it talked about quorum, it did not give a number.
What page?
Never mind.
Saw it.
Never mind.
Well.
I guess there's a number.
I mean, is quorum clarified or?
Yeah, on Section 4 voting, a quorum shall consist of four authorized members of the commission.
Okay, I think that's.
I was reading this after I read the APFO.
So essentially, the only new material was the ex parte section.
Mm-hmm, yes. Which I thought was excellent.
Well.
I think that we've been through it all.
I do too.
Sufficiently.
I do too.
And thanks to the town attorney's just excellent direction with the material that he developed for last year's MPCA conference and reviewing, I think upwards of 10 different municipal planning commission rules of procedure and policy regarding ex parte and those kinds of issues. We drew on that, and I think we summarized it and collapsed it as what we felt, you know, was appropriate for our needs locally. So it's up to you guys to, if you're comfortable with that, it goes into, you know, a bit of detail, but it's really the heart and soul of what planning commission is about and the role that we play, so.
The next thing would be approval of this, of the draft. Do I hear a motion?
Were there any questions or concerns or?
No, I think everybody's, I think we're good.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All right, I move that we approve the planning commission, excuse me, I move that we approve the rules of procedure, which are presented at the October 28th, 2019 commission meeting.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the rules of procedure for the Town of Mount Airy Planning Commission as of 10/28/19. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have rules and procedures. And then these would be, Tom, you would make this up in the correct legal form, and they will be part of their meetings. Okay. Ordinance 2019-12, the APFO open space, possible changes to the town code, Sections 25-5 and 98-23. We recommend this to the town council after discussion. Barney, I'm going to let you do this.
Okay. This is pretty much the same as what you saw previously, with the exception that we mixed use development in CC was removed from it, so it just applies to the downtown zone. The other thing, the council had wanted to kind of clarify the word, you know, they couldn't understand the words as well without seeing like a formula, so the formulas were put in there. But it didn't change anything. The wording's pretty much the same. That's pretty much all that's changed since the last time you've seen it.
So Barney, let me ask a question. We came up with a concept for this, and there was a proposal to do a text amendment. And that text amendment went through in terms of remediating a requirement for MXD on first floor if the property was not on Center Street.
So that is the other ordinance?
That's the other one, okay.
This is just talking about.
All right.
This is just talking about open space.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So what you want to do is put in an addition to the ordinance that we already have, is that correct?
This is amending the.
Amending the open space ordinance. That's what you want to do.
And the APFO, yes.
And the APFO.
Correct.
Question. Since the APFO was originally just done for residential properties, open space for residential properties, that was the intent.
The APFO.
The, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The open space portion, I'm sorry. Can we just take, can we just, I get confused when I put all this together, and I think it should be separate. I don't know how to separate that.
Separate what?
The open space for the residence, residential, strictly residence, and the open space for the downtown zone and possible mixed use. Is that what this does? I got so confused looking at this.
Roxanne, remember, it's because downtown zone, the lots are so.
Right, I know, right.
So it is completely different than residential zone. Yes.
Right.
Okay.
And that's part of my concern, is that we're so locked in in terms of residential development around the original downtown area, that almost all of these retail parcels, and even if they change ownership and so forth, they really have a very finite area of space. While we are very supportive of what open space stands for and what that means for our community going forward, it's more applicable to newly developed area in the larger portions that we've designated hopefully to be MXD. So the real conundrum here is how do you apply an open space requirement for existing downtown zone properties that are so darn small?
Isn't that what we're trying to do?
New construction, not just existing buildings.
Yep, yep.
We have a lot of infill that needs.
Right, in the downtown zone, yes.
But all of those parcels are very, very finite.
Right.
Very, very finite.
So to help clarify that, this is designed so that if you did commercial on the first floor, like, you know, retail on the first floor, it would offset your other two floors and just make you provide the minimum 5% of your property as open space.
Okay.
So it's.
And that objective does fit with our understanding and our goal of what mixed use could potentially do for the town, so.
Right, exactly. I think you're saying you agree with this, is that right? Okay. So, and if there's no residential, I mean, I'm sorry, if there's no commercial, then they don't, that this does not apply.
Then they apply, it's apply as residential.
If they do not have commercial on the first floor, then this does not apply, so.
Then basically, the, yeah, there's no, so you'll have to provide that open space.
Right, right.
So it's like a choice.
We don't have the exception or whatever, just clarifying, thank you.
Are any residences in the downtown?
It's on, it's got the green light.
Okay, are there any residences that fall under the neighborhood professional category in the downtown zone?
No, no, it's going to be one or the other, right, so that's a separate zoning.
Any comments?
Rob's friends.
Yeah, I have a microphone, sorry.
The microphone is there.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
It's been a while. So first of all, with regard to the APFO, it's my understanding, I've been working in this town for a long time, the intention of the APFO, as Ms. Hempel alluded to, was originally, when they added open space into that, into the APFO ordinance, it was contemplated that that would apply to new residential, large residential projects, many of which we've developed as well. And that was the intention, was to make sure that there was a stopgap to get adequate open space on projects like that. I don't believe, and I think others in the town, whether they're administrators, elected officials, believe the same thing. It was never intended to trip up projects in the MXD or the downtown zone. About eight years ago, I was asked by Mayor Rockenberg to serve on a task force to talk about, to look into mixed use. It took us a better part of six years to get that to even come to the table, to in ordinance form. And during that time, we debated open space as a percentage of this and a percentage of that, and there was always a discussion of some relevant open spaces as applied to specifically the mixed use zone that was being contemplated. Fast forward, the ordinance that came before the planning commission had some other projects that jumped on board, and again, little history lesson here, that project, those projects scared everyone, including myself. I live in Mount Airy. The scope was that the other projects we're contemplating using MXD for scared us all. At that point, we came forward with a proposal to do a text amendment only specific to CC zoning, MX light, I think is Mr. Butts coined the phrase. We got that approved. Again, total conversation, not even, on no one's radar did APFO ever come into the discussion in all eight years or the last two years, until the last six or eight months. In the APFO, there is a way out. You can go around that, you can, Barney, you can help me out, there's a section in there, you can get approval to provide the appropriate open space, meeting a percentage of three acres per 100 residents of whatever your proposed project. When we sat down, I believe a few meetings ago, we ran these numbers. I'll give you two examples. A downtown project, rail yard, 18 apartments over commercial. The site is a little under an acre. You run the calculation, at that number, you have to, you can't provide it, because I believe the calculation came up to a half or three quarters of an acre. It just doesn't make sense. The numbers don't apply. You apply those same numbers to a large residential tract, they do make sense. And then a developer can make a decision whether or not to take the project forward. MXD, MXUCC is the text amendment created mixed use light. Again, you apply a reasonable plan, Green Tree being an example, that we used as an example through those discussions. We sat there, used the plan that was, we proposed, as an example. If you take that plan and you apply the three residents per, three acres per 100 residents, I believe the calculation is nine acres out of the 12 of the project. So again, I don't think the APFO, when it was originally crafted, was intended, I know I've had people tell me that, it was never intended to apply to commercial, it doesn't apply to commercial, nor was it intended to apply to the downtown zone, which by the way, I was on that committee as well.
Right.
Nor the MXD.
Correct.
So, here we are, we're at a, you also spent, I think, close to $200,000 over a year and a half of a beautiful master plan, talking about the downtown zone and the Center Street corridor. That Center Street corridor, a good chunk of that is a CC zone property that would be eligible to develop with the tools that you all approved and developed within the MXUCC ordinance. That project couldn't go forward today in any real capacity or any real form unless it was almost completely commercial, which again, was the whole point, was to create a tool for the planning commission to better plan these infill projects. So where that brings us today is that, two ways to go, I see. Either we fix the APFO to its original intention, or we bring MXUCC back into the equation that relieves, that gives some relief, because otherwise, if we don't, okay, the commercially zoned properties that are zoned CC today will be forced to be developed as straight CC. And again, going back eight years, that was the, the objective was to not have that happen. We want a good mix, but at the same time, we want to be able to work those infill properties into the fabric of the existing community, so.
So what you're saying is the formula here that would be used for mixed use is still too stringent, you feel?
I can't, I, for, yes, in some ways yes, and in some ways no. It depends on what you all want to accomplish. If you want to have that flexibility that we originally started with, then yes, it is. Because it may limit you, it may trip a project that you don't intend to. Right now, it trips them all. So if it stays the way it is, unless the town goes out and buys a couple hundred acres and says that, declares that open space is satisfied, then all these CC properties, ours included, is going to get developed as commercial property, and there won't be a residential component to it, which is fine. I mean, that's, you know, we just need some direction. We've been working with you guys a long time, and we're kind of at the end here, we've got to move forward in one direction or the other. And this is kind of my last plea, to work with you all to say, look, I know there was a lot going on a couple meetings ago, and it was like, oh, just pull it out. But I don't know that that's really the best thing for the town going forward, just to pull MXD out and not be able to have some way, some relief for these projects to move forward in the way that you all passed an ordinance for them to do so.
Rob, I think there's a distinction in the opportunity that we continue to believe and is there for MXD. The vertical discriminators are zone-based and size-based. The downtown zone is landlocked, very, very small parcels. There's some opportunity for development and reconstitution of what's here. We think that could be part of revitalization going forward. But there is a size, a constraint there, that doesn't necessarily exist in the other infill areas that our master plan update was focused on, and how we treated them. So I see the essential of this ordinance is to make a discrimination for how we're going to deal with open space appropriately, in our opinion, as a planning commission, in the downtown zone and for properties that are below a certain size.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is because as part of this draft, MXUCC is removed. So it's not like it's an independent conversation. This conversation started with staff making these recommendations, so I'm following up on this particular one.
I'm not sure if staff made recommendations.
We met with Rob, Barney and I.
So you recommended that we.
We're combining the MXU and CC MXU.
So let me just interject one thought, which is that the downtown zone is our priority for development. There's a lot of property in the downtown zone that's been waiting to be developed for a very long time, which impacts this town and the quality of life in this town way more than that Green Tree property on North Main Street. Well, I have some involvement in it as well.
I have a problem, I have a problem with the, with the formula too. I think we should, I don't think that we're going to be able to do what we need to do with this formula downtown zone. I would say, I'm just not getting it, and I would, I would go more towards the way of forest, reforestation. And have somehow or other, a lot, the open space from, let's say, the rail yard, I mean, the rail yard is going to have some open space, but.
Can you clarify what you just said?
Yeah.
You don't think, you don't think that.
I, I don't.
Wait, wait, wait. That you don't think that the downtown zone will work with this?
No, I do not think it'll, I think it's gonna, it's gonna, I think it, I think like Rob does, I think it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna put our feet to the fire.
That's not what Rob, Rob's concerned about not being in this ordinance, that mixed use, he's not concerned about the downtown zone.
Actually, no, I said, oh.
No, he wants, he's.
Now, let me just clarify, oh, I was going to say who's running the meeting, but it's Roxanne. What are we really here to discuss? We're not here to change the ordinance. If you don't like the ordinance, we just recommend back that you don't want, you don't want it approved. I mean, I don't think that we're here to change the formula, are we?
No, we're not here to change the formula, but I think the formula is still too stringent for the downtown area. I, I think we're gonna run into some issues that we've run in before. I mean, we're running into issues with text amendments that we've made that possibly are going to come back, you know, and hit us, but I just don't think that it's, I still think it's too stringent.
One of the things that I appreciated from the downtown master plan vision that the consultant provided to us, in a limited area of space in our current downtown zone, what they laid out were common public areas that could be utilized, okay, for special events that had enough space associated with them that you could congregate locals and visitors who came. That was a collective space. I see that as the practical approach for our downtown, as opposed to a rigorous enforcement of an open space requirement for every single property, okay? Because the majority of what we have in terms of properties downtown, they are finite in space. We really don't have enough retail space or floor space, period.
Can I add to that? So that, I was obviously a part of that plan. That plan, it's beautiful. There's only one problem, all those amenities you talked about are on private property.
That's right.
So, and those properties, those properties are private, and unless someone goes and buys them, and if that particular property owner wanted to, because it's not ours, wanted to develop that, then you really have a problem. It was a beautiful space, but it's on private property. So that doesn't really, unless the town figures out a way to acquire that property and then collectively focus on the development around that property, again, beautiful plan, but not, again, back to the MXD, I don't want to be lost, that same plan had beautiful parks and linear out on CC zoned land. That plan, as it was proposed to you and you all paid for, couldn't be developed today under, not just this, but under all, under the town regulations today. You can't. It would stop because, it would stop right at the APFO, because it couldn't meet the three acres per 100, and still have a project that would work that you saw.
I think once the point, once we get to the point of actually talking about real development of the bank property, we will actually get a mixed use zone passed. I mean, the text amendment was totally a temporary, like, pass-through, you know? I mean, there's not that many properties that, I don't know of any.
The Beck property is one of them that could go through.
It could, it could, but.
The whole point was, my understanding, the point was so that it didn't open the door to the R7 properties and some other properties, that's why it was done the way it was done.
Well, that's.
It was in a limited scope, I believe, was the word used.
It was just because there were some issues, so we backed off on the mixed use. It wasn't that we were saying we're not going to do it ever. And then you came up with the text amendment, and then that ended up getting passed.
Excuse me, Barney, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, so a couple of things to add. One, we did calculations for the bank property, the rail yard, the cold storage, and for the rail yard and the bank property, when we ran the figures with numbers that we had with how many units they were proposing, it basically boiled down to the 5% requirement, which was going to be offset by the, more or less by the easements they were given for the trail. So it does work for properties where you have a tight property, it don't have any room at all, like you're saying, like, say, the Watkins Building or something like that. Keep in mind, Carl also brought this up at the council, you need some flexibility, and that's already in the APFO. It's not before you, right here, because it's in the section that's not being changed. There is a mitigation that you can pay in fee and lieu, that still exists. And, you know, with the staff or the planning commission, you know, we would recognize it.
Yeah, well, let me clarify, there is no fee and lieu under the APFO.
It's the open space.
Right. You tend to get confused.
Yeah, we are.
It should keep separate. The APFO applies when we're inadequate. It doesn't apply when we are adequate.
Okay.
And all, right now, the problem is that the town, it's been determined, is currently inadequate with respect to parks' open space. And that means that no, my reading of the APFO, there may be those that disagree, but I did go back to the video, when this was originally passed and the open space was added. And the clear intention was, when we're inadequate, we're jacking up the requirements. And it's going to apply anytime, any development. And it's going to apply anytime, any development adds residents. Okay? Again, doesn't apply when we're not inadequate, when we're not inadequate. But when we are, there is a specific provision that says a waiver may be applied for before the planning commission and granted if the development provides three acres of open space for every 100 new residents that development proposes or a prorata share thereof. Okay? And that's the provision on the APFO side that I think Rob and others finds very onerous because they don't have enough acreage to devote to meet that threshold, that waiver requirement. So what this ordinance does, as I understand it, it was drafted mainly by engineering, is on the APFO side, it lightens the waiver threshold so that, as it's currently written, these smaller properties in the DTZ can now qualify for this, and this no longer becomes an impediment to their development. Totally separate from that is the problem of Section 98-23, which is an open space ordinance that applies whether we're inadequate or whether we are adequate. And right now, as it's currently written, it only applies to properties that are either zone in a residential zone, so not the DTZ, or can be, is, has a residential use by virtue of a special exception, Green Tree. Okay? Problem with 98-23 is a separate problem, but I think that people in Rob's position and others would say that, forget whether we're adequate or inadequate, apart from the APFO problem, is the problem that the open space, 98-23, does not account for or provide a good open space standard for things like the DTZ, or more importantly, a mixed-use property like, like Green Tree. And, you know, I think he would say, and I don't want to speak for you, that, you know, a lot of time was taken to pass an MXUCC with pretty good indication as to what property it would most immediately benefit. And yet, he's halted not just by the APFO, but also by 98-23. So as I read, this ordinance is attempting to cure two things at once, but they're still two separate things.
So, Tom, let me ask this. Let's consider a future overlay. If the opportunities that are out there, say, for the acquisition of the regular property, okay, and I'm not sure of the acreage there in terms of an access, you know, to the large park area up there, and then, heaven forbid, but we so want, to see progress on Harrison-Lashire and the aspect of large acreage there.
Eighty-five.
Which would be designated park. Okay? So what's the overlay of those acreage opportunities when it comes to this consideration?
Well, this is only for the downtown zone. So they don't apply.
Well, but as to APFO, though, and whether we are adequate or inadequate.
Inadequate, it would apply.
Most adequate.
Correct.
That's where I was going.
I think we're shy somewhere around 80 acres. And Harrison-Lashire is 85, Reglar is 25 acres.
Okay, 25 and 85, okay.
But that still doesn't deal with the 23.
98-23.
Right.
And this is a, this is an ordinance that would apply to, how does this ordinance...
Tom's answer.
Applies to the, yeah.
Tom's answer.
Doesn't change the APFO, and it doesn't change the 98-23. This overrides both of them?
Okay, it changes and loosens the standards for a DTZ property that is mixed use and provides both residential and some commercial component.
Okay.
It does so both on the APFO side and 98-23 side. Let me be more accurate on the last part, though, okay? Remember that 98-23, as it's currently written, does not apply to a DTZ property at all.
Right.
So you're kind of giving and you're taking. You're, on the APFO side, this ordinance says we're lightening up the requirement, but on the 98-23 side, it's imposing a requirement that maybe doesn't already exist.
So why, if it doesn't apply to 98-23, DTZ is exempt from that already, why wouldn't you just make DTZ exempt from APFO and be done with it? Seems a lot easier. If it's not going to apply when you get there, then why would you make it provide something before it even gets to that point? That doesn't even make sense.
You realize you're talking to the entity who doesn't pass the ordinances, right?
No, I understand, but you make the recommendation, and we're talking about planning, your, you know, your regulations. So to me, if DTZ is exempt from an open space requirement already on the books, then there was obviously no intention that it'd apply, so why isn't it just a text amendment to be exempt from APFO?
Yeah, I disagree with your last statement, it's not so obvious to me. And the answer, again, is if APFO is designed to put the brakes on development, that will enhance an already deficit situation that has entirely different purpose than 98-23 is all I'm saying.
So I would recommend that this go to the council for approval, and I say that because, not ignoring what Rob has said today, but they're very different things. This is, this can be about the downtown zone, and then we can talk about mixed-use text amendment separately, because they're really not, they're just not alike at all. I mean, it's just, everything about it is different. So, and I really think that, you know, if staff is going to have these very, very detailed technical meetings with developers and then make recommendations to us that we need this information, and I'm talking about the meeting two months ago, or whatever it was, you know, it's like, Rob, he's sitting here telling us, well, he was in a meeting with them, well, we don't, we weren't invited to that meeting.
I didn't say that.
Well, then, well, John said it. I mean, but you were in a meeting with them, right?
I was talking about the meeting with you all, when I was at the workshop.
Well, you were in a recent meeting, way more recent. So, you know, I'm not going to sit here and pretend like I'm an engineer and I understand every calculation, but I want to be as informed as possible, because these, you know, last meeting, we had quite a few people from the neighborhood, and I'm not just going to say, like, oh, never mind, Rob's here, so I'm going to change my view on this. I think we really need a lot more information about how this really works before we go and say, oh, we like Rob, and so we're going to change things. So I would recommend that this go forward as it's been altered to, and recommend that the council pass this, and that would be my vote.
Why, my question is, why can't we just say that the downtown zone is exempt from the APFO? Why can't we say that?
You take your good with your bad.
I think we might want to have a workshop before we just go and do that.
We could just go see him.
Yeah, because it's bigger than open streets, I mean, all the water, all of the other things that might come down. I think that...
No, just relating to open space.
Just related to the open space, that's what I'm talking about.
That's a good rationale for a workshop.
Open space is exempt from the downtown zone, no?
No.
No. That's, I was asking what she said. Ask her.
Applies, in my opinion, to the downtown zone, any property.
Where there's residence.
Now, it so happens that if you're developing a purely commercial property or a purely industrial property, you're not adding residents. So how much acreage do you need to set aside, then, to qualify for the three acres to 100? The answer is zero. You qualify for the waiver if you're purely commercial or industrial.
So my question is, does the, this is three acres per 100 residents, is that a correction calculation to correct a deficit, or is it a maintenance calculation? Is it calculated to, is that the level where we need to be to be in compliance, or is it the level that we need to enact to correct for efficiency?
Yeah, how was that established in the first place?
I don't know how they came up with that, except that that was the standard that apparently, this is hearsay, that the EPA, I think, was in vogue at the time. And so they took that and applied it to the, and made that your exception threshold. And to answer your question, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the rationale was. I think the rationale was, and must have been in some sense, that, look, if you're gonna, you know, if we're in deficit, if development's coming on, and at least supplies the equivalent onsite to its new residents, then in some way that ameliorates the impact of the new development, I gather. That was all I could gather. But does it neutralize the deficit? No, it does not. It can actually increase the deficit, if you think about it.
Right, that's where I was going.
So I'm not sure how effective it was, but I think that was the intent.
Thanks.
I think we may need a workshop first.
Right, but we have, we have something on the table that we need to vote on. No matter how, you want to vote, we need to vote on it, so.
Do we need to vote on it tonight, Tom?
No.
Don't need to vote on it?
Workshop it, you can talk about it, you can...
So you want to have a workshop on just getting...
All of it? Or just this?
No, just this.
You mean, this and also the APFO?
Yeah, 98-23.
So is this like a 60-day thing? This is different than that.
Yeah, it is a 60-day thing. You should turn around 60 days, or it could be taken as a recommendation to approve.
Okay. So if we don't, if we don't approve it tonight, then we have another 30 days before we need...
I think it was referred on October 4th, October 7th.
Yeah, so we have, okay. I'm waiting for a motion.
I think it's for the possibility of no APFO in the downtown zone. Just the open space part, APFO, not the whole APFO. Right, okay.
I think that's where we get confused. We start talking about APFO when we really mean open space, because the APFO is going to apply to everything.
And it covers a lot of money.
And it covers, it covers more than just open space.
There's a significant difference between the two. We do not want to set aside APFO, but we may want to make specific recommendations or exceptions for a particular zone, like downtown zone. I think that's why we need a workshop to clarify for ourselves our understanding of what we think is in the best interest of the town.
Make a motion.
So I would move, I would make a motion that we have a workshop to delve into each of those critical issues and areas and try to get some clarification, okay? That we're in agreement with and we think fits the vision and the goals that we have for the town.
Can I, can I add on to that? Which, we would want someone with expertise at our workshop.
Yeah.
To, could answer technical questions.
Yeah. So timing would need to be worked for them as well.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we have, hold a workshop for ordinance number 2019-12 before we make a recommendation to the town council. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, John, we need a workshop.
That might be challenging. So if, what dates, like, is Wednesday or Thursday better for most people? Mondays tend to be, every evening is pretty much this council room is being, or do you want to meet at an alternative location? We can meet somewhere else. We can meet at the medical center or whatever.
Or the library, we're not that, maybe we could meet at the library.
Well, it has to be a public meeting, so it has to meet all those protocols as well. So we need to advertise it.
Center. Hospital. Yeah, wherever you can.
Yeah.
So again, back to the same question, are Monday nights best for everybody? If we could do November, that's what I'm asking, like, November 11th or something like that, but...
That's Veterans Day, November 11th.
The 18th, maybe?
That's fine with me.
Well, I mean, maybe you put a doodle out there and let's find out when it works best.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, we probably can't use this room, but we can, you had to be at Mamza, okay? That's what I'm wondering, it seems like a Wednesday or Thursday might be the better day, sort of, I wasn't sure who could make a Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, so eliminate Pam and, excuse me, I don't mean this in a derogatory sense. We still have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have to go with the quorum, we have to go with the most people at the right time.
Maybe we'll try to shoot at a doodle pole at everybody and see what we can come up with.
Okay.
We'll try to do something in the first couple weeks of November.
Other days are...
I think we should...
Stay happy, we have a problem for next month.
Okay.
Do we have to advertise that, Tom, 14 days in advance?
Yes.
Or is...
Reasonable notice.
Reasonable notice.
So let's jump on it and see if we can nail something down.
The next item is number six, a work session and discussion on 2019-13, the downtown zone, I'm thinking. Possible changes to the Town Code, Section 112-37.1.
Trying to say we're going to combine it with the same work session, is that what you're saying? Want to make sure everybody did get the second page as part of this.
Yeah, there is a, I have one question about that page. Soon as I find it.
Separate for everyone else.
Who's speaking on this ordinance? I'm sorry?
I guess I am.
Okay. Well, I have a question for you.
There's one about the parking.
Yes, street parking. What do those numbers mean? The 100-60-100-100-80-100?
I'm going to defer that to Barney, because that is existing code, that percentage of uses, I believe.
Yeah, it's for shared parking. It basically refers to morning, day, night, for the weekdays is the first three numbers, and then morning, day, night for the weekends. So basically, 100 means that it's 100% utilized, but during the day, residential apartments are only 60% utilized, according to our code. People are away to work and stuff during the week.
So this is, the wording changes apply to Section B. Okay.
Removing the, as I said earlier in the first presentation on this, it didn't come out the way it was intended, so it's basically bringing parking more into line with existing town code of two spaces per unit.
I'm not sure that's the way to answer this question. Was there an earlier time when development was proposed when it was different? It was perhaps more lenient than what you were suggesting here?
I'm not sure what the history exactly of the parking requirements are in the town, but this is basically what, currently, kind of what I've did to research on these two spaces, they're all over the parking requirements. I found documents that indicated other towns that had half a space per something for apartment, 1.5 to 2.3. So this is basically bringing it in to... So this is basically bringing it in to more with town code of two spaces per bed, bedroom, and then making an exception that if it's a three-bedroom apartment or something, that there's guaranteed space for that third bed.
So historically, has it been two spaces in Mount Airy for a significant number of years?
I would say yes, yeah.
Did you say two spaces per bedroom?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Per u, per unit. Per unit.
Oh, you said per bedroom.
He's saying.
Say, per unit, well, let me rephrase that, for, basically when it becomes above a two, hold on a second, one space per bedroom, I said I wasn't, two spaces per bedroom and one space per bedroom. Okay, this is what it is, it's two spaces per, per one-bed bedroom unit. And say if you have a two-bedroom apartment unit, you add an extra space. So it's three spaces per two-bed bedroom.
That's still way, that's, that's way off base. I don't think that's what that meant. That means, I mean, we're increase, I mean, we're increasing cement and blacktop instead of.
It all depends on the amount of units of it, if it's one-bed bedroom, it's two spaces, which is that. Also with, I want to make sure that within modern people now staying home, working from the house and everything else, that there are enough spaces.
I don't know any, I don't know any.
I know what this is reading, the way I read it, the way I.
So Carl, do you believe that some of this parking can be utilized for, by other individuals in the town? I mean, is that the?
Is that what you're thinking?
Because I feel like the number, well, I feel like the number is really high, and it's unachievable for anything that's built. So, I mean, if, are we driving for it to maybe get other town inhabitants to be able to use these spots during the day when these people are at work? I don't understand, because.
That wasn't my goal, but if that's.
Well, I, I mean, that's, well, that's, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Carl, we have an extremely finite space.
Well, I was, what I was getting at was, that was the only way I could see why we would want to push this, but, because we can't build to that, like, we can't, I mean, I don't think, there's no property on, in the town that we can have people have enough space to put residents in those spots. Now, that is a shame, because it sounds like those are the amount of spots that are needed for that, if it was, you know, if it would allow for it. That sounds like a great parking scenario.
Yeah.
But I think it inhibits us from doing any construction with respect to meeting that parking requirement. Like, don't you think?
I don't believe so. I believe they can build to, to that, but yet again, I also want to make sure that.
Without a garage, without a garage.
Oh, without a garage, but just say, without a garage, but like, open, not open space, but normal, let's just say, normal parking lot spaces. Because also now, nowadays, a lot of people rent bedrooms out, so it's like, say if you get a three-bed bedroom unit, you could have three people living there, driving, driving from it, and if there's not enough.
A parent and two kids.
Could be two, but a parent and two kids are driving.
Two little kids, two are driving.
Teenagers or, or little, but unless there's a formula that a developer can come up and present to me that says, you know, say if you have, say, twenty-one-bed bedroom units, X percentage of that will only be one occupant in that unit that's driving, so therefore there would be an extra space automatically there.
I think, so I drive around to a lot of developments. No place has more than two parking spaces, none.
Okay.
Okay? I don't care if they rent out all three bedrooms, they have to figure out a place to park, and some of them can't park in the development, but that's, but that's their decision, most do, most have.
Most have visitor parking.
Parking, right.
There's a visitor parking for different things.
Right, but it's not, you don't assign on a three-bedroom apartment, three parking units. Never, I've never seen that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we'd make up our open space right there, but I, I.
Well, that's fine, you can, I mean, we can just leave it at what the current town standard, standard is of two spaces per unit, but I think Barney has something that.
Yes, Barney?
I was just going to say, back, I don't even remember what year we added the shared parking, but when we did that, we were looking at the entire parking standard, because we really required more than we needed to on a lot of places, and we actually relaxed the requirements back then.
Right.
Apartments was one thing that did come up, two spaces was, was adequate, we didn't want to change anything there. A three-bedroom often offsets the one-bedroom.
Okay.
So one-bedrooms could have two cars, but, you know, oftentimes there's only one person there too, so.
Okay.
It often offsets, so two usually works out, just.
So, so Barney, just to clarify, historically, what has the town requirement been for commercial space, square footage? Been for residential, and what it, has it been for a property that had shared residential and commercial?
Well, commercial depends on the type of use, so retail is different than an office, you know, so that's, that's, our parking has different requirements for the different types. Again, the reason for the shared is, is like the downtown, you have people living, you know, rooms above some of these places, but they're not always here during the day, so there's a lot of shared opportunity.
I mean, the last one I remember that we did was what, East Ridgeville Boulevard, a place next to Bank of America, I don't know, is that, that's still never been built, right? But, but we did loosen the parking, because they were having the, like, the long-term units and the office, or whatever it was. Yeah, I mean, it's perfect sense, we don't want to pave over more than we have to, I mean, it's enough paving as it is.
Now, so, I mean, if we want, if you choose to just reduce it back to the town standard, that's fine, just as long as it potentially, I mean, currently the, the town does not require any certain number of visitor spaces requirement, right? It's whatever.
Correct.
Dictates to, say, any available due to not being used by current units, but there's no requirement in apartment complexes or anything of a dedicated number of visitor spaces, correct?
Correct, there's not, no requirement for visitor spaces.
So.
I don't know of any problems we've had, though, by not having that requirement.
If, if we're gonna just have downtown zone be the same as current code, then do we need this, or is that? I read this like last time, but I didn't read it again, sorry.
Carl, that's a lot of good things in here to go through, I think there's adjustments that need, need to be made, but I, I think there's some things to consider.
Because this is actually for next time, right? Future, is in this one?
Oh, this was today.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I, that's why I'm kind of discombobulated, because I was, I asked to be notified when it was on, and then the reason why I knew it was on, because I looked at the agenda tonight, so.
You also have in here some restrictions on types of residential use that can be here.
Okay, are we back?
I, I just started at the beginning.
Okay.
We did the parking first, so let's start at the beginning.
I mean, no, I'm for this, for the parking, I'm fine to putting it back to, to, to space, to the current town standard. I would appreciate some type, I just could not find, the best thing I could find for a visitor space requirement, which I just came across a couple of weeks ago, that was not going to, you know, keep, I mean, like, keep offering amendments to something that you keep reading, was like, I believe out west somewhere, the town requires like a certain percentage, say, the number of visitor spots required would be dependent on the percentage of current spots or something, which I could not figure out how that would work, it was like five, five to ten percent of, you know, current spots would go into calculation of visitor spots, but this, that's, that starts jumping a little bit too difficult to calculate. I would rather have a firm standard of, you know, one visitor per, say, fifth, let's say, you know, like fifteen units or something.
My sense of this is, we haven't built it, and the extra folks haven't come yet, and therefore, I'm, I'm, I'm prone to want to say, let's keep it the way it is until we see a compelling reason to need to change it.
But I'm, I'm just afraid that if you do that, I mean, not saying, I mean, no, I mean, I've said, I said, I'll agree to, you know, I'm agreeable to leaving it the current town standard, but also, it's kind of like, look at it too, like, it's kind of too late once, if it gets too developed, people start looking around spots, I know, I'm, no, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm kind of proactive more so than reactive, and I'm just afraid that.
Carl, you're not any more proactive than this commission is.
I'm not, I'm not.
I'm saying the only reason we might take that temporary position until we see compelling evidence that it's, it's not in our best interest and we need to change it.
I know, I'm.
But, but, you're asking for speculation, you're asking for projection when we don't have any sound basis to understand what would be most, more appropriate.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's my concern.
No, that's fine, no. Judy, what were you saying about?
I'm sorry, because I thought.
No problem, give me page, page number and section, please.
Okay, page two, section B, number B.
B.
At the bottom of the page, about downtown zone, and it's section two, number B.
Hold on, hold on.
Letter B.
Okay, gotcha.
Talking about principally permitted uses, so.
Sorry, sorry, what are you on?
Very bottom, very bottom.
Very bottom of page.
That, gotcha.
Two on to three.
Yeah, which really goes on.
It actually is three.
That was, okay, gotcha, okay.
Looks like you're saying that residential use is the only allowable, residential uses are on the second floor of any commercial, like, there has to be a commercial space on the first floor.
Correct, that is part of it, that the intent, the intent of this was to turn, turn back the clock, back to the original zoning that was applied to buildings or potential developments along Prospect Avenue.
So this would undo that text amendment? Is this the same, is that what?
Yeah, 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 none of, none of that was.
It's not coming back to me.
Yeah, yeah. It's been several months, so it's.
All right, all right.
Yes, just turn the clock back and undo the text amendment that was presented and approved by the council in twenty-sixteen, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen?
So.
Somewhere around there?
Partially undoes the text amendment, because if you go to section one-twelve-dash-sixty-two, page four of five, what it does is it provides an opportunity for a special exception that would allow purely residential within the DTZ off of Main or Center Street.
Oh.
Whereas currently, it's a use of right in those areas, whereas before, it was absolutely prohibited.
Right.
That exception, though, would not apply to Prospect?
Would apply to Prospect.
It would.
It would or would not?
Exception could apply to Prospect.
Could apply, it could apply.
I mean, there are some conditions here that have to meet, but.
All right, so it's a specific standard.
I just, I don't know, I just think it would be easier to go back to our original amendment that stated that they have commercial and retail, you know, and just, because another place on here, hold on, let me find it. Page three of five, letter L, letter I, excuse me, where you have the people, developments that do not have frontage on Main Street or Center Street that contain a residential component shall have parking spaces equal to the number of bedrooms per residential unit plus two extra spaces per residential unit in addition to the parking requirements. So we've got like.
That was part of that, I mean, we're changing that, that's, that was left over from, I never caught that, to strike it.
So Roxanne.
Strike that, okay.
So Roxanne, did you mean, like, going back to before we had the text amendment and looking at that language?
Yes.
And then seeing what we want to do with that language? That might be.
I think, I think, and how do we go about doing that, Tom?
So, a couple of things just to remember, I think this is on the agenda for, to set a workshop, and the reason I say that is, in fairness, the developer is not here, I know Thompson's here, in fairness, their lawyer's not here, and the developer herself, no doubt, because they believe that all tonight was to do was to set up a workshop and have this very discussion.
So I was right, the way I read that, that it was to set up a workshop, thank you.
Right, and so I'm sure that's why they're not there, so, in fairness.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
But, but beyond that, I think that, so the question was, can you all?
Sort of go back to before the text amendment and look at that language, rather than going off of this, which.
Yes.
Is a lot of stuff we're not sure if we have to take out.
I could certainly provide that to you, what the code looked like, you know, a pre.
Yeah.
And then, whatever you all recommend, you can do one of several things, you can either recommend, yeah, you know, recommend approval as is, or do not approve this at all, or sort of a middle-of-the-road that would say, yes, but under these conditions, this needs to change, that needs to change, you all have that freedom and can certainly do that.
Okay.
Could we, do we include this as well in the workshop?
No, 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 no. Oh, I don't know if we can have it in the same workshop.
That might be too.
That might be a little too much.
Yeah, I think that would, this is more than.
That means potentially two meetings, then another.
Yeah, yeah. Well, my recommend, based on our recent discussions, my recommendation would be to recommend non-approval of this ordinance, because we're going to go back and review from the beginning, so that would be my. So I guess I'm moving, I guess I'm making a motion to not, to not recommend approval of ordinance number twenty thousand, two nine, twenty-nineteen-dash-thirteen to the town council.
But are we willing to commit what we'll come back with, or how we'll task ourselves to come back with our recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, it sounded to me like what we were doing was, we were going to sort of go back to, to the original, I mean, I was thinking, we'd look at the original and the text amendment together, or however we want to do it, but this is like Roxanne said, it's just sort of complicating things.
So I might recommend if you're going to hold it.
Okay.
To review it and make recommendations on it.
Then just not do it.
You don't do it, because that's what happened with twelve, is that because the vote was to not recommend it, you had to go back.
Oh, oh, right, and then they sent it back.
Enacted.
Right, right.
Instead, they chose to change and send it back.
Okay, right, 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 so we just hold it.
Okay, so, the motion should read that we're going to hold.
Or there's no mo, or there is a motion?
Or.
Or you can just set a workshop, set this for a word.
Okay, then let's set, okay, so. Uh, yeah.
But it's also sixty days.
Yes, we're going to get that one in too.
Yeah.
And Thanksgiving's coming.
So are these, with the developer, we come into the, well, they probably would come to the workshop.
Well, would probably want to, yeah, I would think.
I know, so we might, it'd be great if we could do them together.
Yeah.
I think we need to try to do them together, and I think that's going to limit the places that we can have this, because I'm thinking it's going to go a little bit past nine-thirty. I mean, we're going to start at seven, we'll try to hold, you know, an hour and a half to each, but we might need a little bit more time.
For what it's worth.
Hour and a half.
Is there, does anyone else see more than one ordinance in here?
What's what?
Yeah, that, the second one, I apologize.
No, 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 I mean, is, with the, with the structural heights, I mean, there's parking and structural height, I, I feel like there's two ordinances in here.
That's why.
Well, I mean, right, well, I don't know, I mean, that's maybe, you know, part of the digestion of the document is, is, I feel like we're, if we. If we're recommending approval for this, I feel like I'm recommending three topics, and so I'm not sure if there's too much crammed into the one ordinance, it's addressing a lot of things.
I think that's why we're going to have the, why we're going to have the workshop. The original's not this, not this complicated at all.
Okay, I, I mean, I just.
I think maybe you're saying, like, sometimes it would refer back to a different region, if we're talking about structure or whatever.
I've been also by told by Tom that you can just not repeal that, you have to replace it with something. So you, so with ever, whatever recommendation you make, it has to replace what it existentially is there.
Right, it would be, it would be a mandate.
Okay, I just wanted, okay.
If we feel there's a need, yeah.
If we feel there's a need. So.
But, but the building height and the parking, this building height and parking direction or instructions are not in a single ordinance, are not in a single document, that's what I was getting at, right? Like, it's, there's. Like, it's, there's...
It's all part of the downtown zone.
Right, so I just feel as though if we were going to revisit this, it may be broken up. I mean, I feel like I'm the only one...
Well, it may be adjustments to the downtown zone. And that may be what your recommendations are.
Maybe, it might be.
It is as introduced, it is what it is.
Right.
It's introduced to that council this way. And you might recommend back that, you know, you really should split those up or something like that. That's something you all...
I mean, I don't, the idea, I mean, yeah, we have to touch up some of these parking numbers, but some of the notions in here are reasonable. It's just that I don't, I can't recommend it as it's crafted.
Right, that's why we're going to have the workshop.
All the height restrictions and everything was just taken from previous, from existing code and placed in here. So there's nothing new that has not already been approved, approved, like the height restrictions for 24 feet and everything, that's already in existing code.
Well, then should it be extracted out of it?
Well, no, it was extracted for, under special exceptions and things of that nature, you do need something, but it's, but it's not, it's not setting anything that's not already been, you know, enacted is the best way to describe it.
I would ask, and I'm not sure if he was on this commission, why was, why was it ever changed?
Okay, so a little bit of history. They came to us, the developer came from Cold Storage, came to us and asked us for a text amendment to remove the commercial component...
Required.
Requirement on, on the downtown zone so that they could just develop it residentially. When they came back with the numbers, we felt that it was not in...
Too many.
Yeah, it was too many. It wasn't, I mean, they were going to put two, almost twice as many units in a, in an area where there's only 80 units to begin with.
And it's...
And safety concerns and stuff. So what we're trying to do is we are not going to recommend, we're going to review, the motion is that we're going to have a review and a workshop on this. So we don't need any more discussion on it because everything is going to be discussed at the workshop. So, all those in favor of having a workshop and adding it to the workshop that we have now, knowing that we might have another one if we don't finish, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Could we start the meeting possibly at 6 o'clock PM? Is that something we'd meet, anybody's...
Yeah, I, I think we...
I prefer six over...
Everybody could do that at six?
Yes.
Because then it gives us two hours possibly. So, okay, 6:00 PM.
And that's November the 18th at 6 o'clock.
We set the date, I don't think we set...
Oh, we don't have a date, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think we set the date yet.
I hope.
It might be November 18th, but...
Sorry.
Yep, yeah, let's do it.
All right, should we clarify now? I mean, I know an email's going to go out, but we want to make sure that we have for this, which would be the original text, I shouldn't say that, the original ordinance prior to the text amendment.
And the text amendment.
Text amendment.
The 2016 text?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and then we, you know, hopefully know what we're comparing and...
Okay. All right, next on the agenda are future items. They all seem to be about trash.
Yeah, so there'll be a special exception that'll, you guys are going to forward to the BOA for a 10,000-gallon fuel cell that they want to put on-site to refuel their trucks. And then again, they also are looking to amend, amend the plat because they had to do some lot line adjustments to create a bigger parcel so that it could support all of their excess dumpsters and trucks, et cetera, and their maintenance shop and headquarters. And again, the concept site plan for what they're proposing there.
John and Barney, we have other properties that have fuel depots or, or have fuel storage.
Well, we have propane, sure.
Was it above ground?
Capability.
Yeah, so gas stations are all below ground. Other, other places have above ground.
All right, so, so we have, we have criteria, we have experience in this regard.
They initially came in with an above ground, but then we mentioned to them possibly below grade might be a better alternative possibly, just because of, it doesn't say either one here, so it could be above or...
Are we seeing a need to alter or strengthen our requirements on either above or below ground? Is there anything that would cause us to feel like we need tighter controls or more requirements?
Above ground. I mean, I think the above ground, basically, you know, currently we require that it has a containment unit around the tank to support the fuel cell that's there and also to be covered with a roof. Currently, that's our standards.
And it's, do we have a maximum?
I'd have to look at the code real good. I thought it was two...
Can we call off in?
Yeah, I thought there was a maximum, but I can't pull it off the top of my head.
All right.
I'm sorry?
I think it's 60,000. I thought it was circa...
Above ground, 60,000?
Yeah.
That doesn't sound right, that sounds...
Right, right.
We did the, it's not Southern States, it's the other one.
Well, TSC did a propane tank that came from...
Yeah, we did tractor supply and it was propane.
And that was behind a fence with bollards around it. I mean, so the chances, the only thing that could hit that is maybe their forklift, which would not be...
No.
You know, and...
Does anybody have anything else before we? Our next planning meeting, commission meeting date is November 25th.
But we'll be seeing each other before that, won't we?
Yes, we will. I would like also, John is going to start putting on the agenda, please look at all of your MXD notes. We're going to start working on that. Does anybody have anything else? So, yeah, according to our new rules and regulations and procedures, we will have an election in November.
Wow, I thought it was February.
Well, it, it is, but it, our new rules and regulations say November.
Let's change that.
Okay, well... I mean, it's going to happen, I mean, we've got to get it in line sometime, so let's start now and do it in November.
It seems like it used, like, years ago, it was November.
It was, it started out, yeah. Yeah, so we will have an election in November.
Question I would have is then looking at the calendar for December. It's very difficult to seem to get a planning commission meeting in December.
We have typically never had one in December.
So we might be able to get a work session in there too, maybe.
We could.
There you go.
So hopefully, hopefully we can figure out a date that works for everything. And again, it might be somewhere else, it might not be here.
That's fine.
But again, we have to make sure we're notifying the public, et cetera.
That's fine.
So we'll send out a doodle poll on that one as well. And 6 o'clock for those meetings are acceptable?
Yes.
Awesome.
Anything else? Do I have seconds? It's been moved in second and we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. See you all sometime soon.